I present the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands and who governs, in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. I just need a Google minutes from August fourteenth.
Seven?
Any discussion on here? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Aye.
Two minute public participation. Any questions, concerns, or comments for the board? Turn to the microphone. Name the address.
David, that's one seven six Caitlin. I had sent an email. I'm not sure if you've all seen it. Dr. Willett did respond to me last night, but he said he was unable to give much information because of course he was home. He shouldn't be able to give information. So I'm just looking for when you guys discussed it. I don't need you to rehash the whole thing. I'm just looking for when this transition academy was established and what the discussion was and how the cost compares to what we're doing before, which was outsourced. So I'm just looking at the other information I was looking for was enrollment. There have been several mentions over the last few months about enrollment increasing. And so wondering is that increasing from eighteen nineteen or is that an increase over what you had expected for this year? Does it increase? So I'm just looking. Let's do that next.
Liz has a fifty four assignment. In the spring, the last two springs, you've done the at Pompe school with L. It went to Pompe school and then at one of the other schools, something regarding drugs. It was combined with human services or school resource. With all that's going on with vaping and with, you know, all the incidents of collapsed lungs and stuff, I encourage you to do that earlier this year maybe, potentially do it earlier in the year versus later in the year because the addiction, if somebody hasn't started, a freshman maybe hasn't started it, they have an opportunity to get the information really quickly early in the year. Just maybe consider that. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. It's nice to have you between you and your way. Any other public discussion?
Correspondents, Deb Smith had commented to an email she sent in.
Can't hear.
Received an email from a town council member, an email requesting a current DOE budget, an email regarding busing and cyclical peers in our pre- pre-school program that we're crowed to alleviate maybe some of the traffic from grabbing them off. And then a question came in about how are we gonna recognize families at graduation since we don't, uh... Sorry, we don't ring, no use of that screen anymore. Sorry. We received an email that's beginning with requesting representation and some other questions about the tax utilization.
Sure, up to date information. People that it wasn't like questions or updates. Marvelous from Mrs. Getz on the transition academy and also the enrollment. And then Liz also getting in plain sight. I believe, I believe Liz was referring to getting in plain sight.
Speak up.
Getting in plain sight, Liz, Liz, is that what you were referring to?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe in plain sight, maybe doing that earlier. Or something similar. I don't know. We have other things planned.
We did one in the spring season. And I would go in school. Can you speak to the enrollment? Mr. Jackson, the same thing that you are seeing.
Yeah, I mean, you're seeing an increase projected to, you know, it's either twenty twenty eight in, uh, in enrollment pre K through two. So as that starts to happen, just like, you know, when the trending was going down, it kind of cycled through the grades. Now when it's edging back up, it's gonna cycle through the grades as well. So by twenty twenty four, I think we're, you know, it's projected to be something like five hundred fifty eight. It stays in the five fifty to roughly five fifty zone all the way through twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty four. So it's, um, it's going right now, if you figure we're at about four seventy four as of a few days ago. Well, what's happening is pre K through two.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So each, you know, four seventy four now, you'd have like five fifty eight by twenty twenty four in that, in the pre K through two zone. So that, those numbers, you know, comparing those two roughly, you can say, let's just estimate, it would be about seventy to eighty. There'd be seventy to eighty more and at that, that group, you know, that would continue to cycle back through. So I don't think you're ever gonna get, you know, you're not getting all the way past three thousand, but you're gonna, as we've talked about a number of times, and I've said this a number of times, I think you'll probably edge out around two thousand and then start to climb again. And then you're gonna hedge back up again, which is the trend that you're seeing from the report for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. I'm in the process of posting some of the things, you know, this week we posted the, you know, adjusted budget from the, uh, from the TC adjustment. So one of the things I'll be posting is enrollment information. But we got a couple of surprises this week with respect to some paperwork needed to get done for the state. So that put me back a little bit. We'll be putting on the budget site, the information about the enrollment. I have responded to questions on that report. I think I responded to, um, what Miss Getz on one of those and to somebody else on to, um, with respect to that, that report.
I think the, I think her question tonight though is the, our change in numbers for this year. If it's an increase from last year or just enrollment change in general.
I, because, because you've still got the, because you've still got the, um, the lower classes that came up going through, you know, you're still gonna, you're gonna keep going down a bit until you get close to, in my estimation, around that two thousand mark and then it climbs again. So I would say we were...
So are we seeing an increase from last year though?
So we, we're seeing it, we're seeing it, for instance, in kindergarten go up by thirteen or fifteen seats as of a few days ago. But you'll see on the other end, because those smaller classes are still replacing the bigger ones, you're still gonna have a net loss for a few years net. And then once you hit a certain threshold, you'll see the gains start to come back through. Again, I don't think you're gonna get up to three thousand, but you're gonna see that, I mean, I can't tell by twenty twenty eight, I don't think you're gonna get all the way up that you got. But the pre K through two numbers growing means those grades that are larger at the low pre K two level that are going back up will then propagate back out through the years and you'll see it come down and then come back up again. And it'll, you know, probably reach somewhere in the middle of forty four probably. I mean, I have to estimate it because I don't have that data. I don't have it through twenty twenty four, twenty twenty eight. Um, but you're, you'd start coming back up.
But we're not losing students, losing students? Less than we...
Again, we're going to, the trending down happened for a few years. The trending up will now happen for a few years. So you'll lose some more students to trend down to that threshold and then you're gonna gain students back again and start edging back up.
Yeah.
It's, it's a trending down being replaced with a trending back, back up. And so when we're talking about enrollment decreasing, it's been mostly in respect to the, um, projects that are going on. And so in order to get further justification for serving the state, you got those reports and then those reports indicate that, you know, through those years, that's gonna climb and that's, you know, that's where that started. But, um, that information, I'll put that information out there as soon as I can basically.
Yeah, we don't report, um, official enrollment until October.
The, the actual state enrollment reports are October first. So for instance, that, they had to pick a date. You have to pick some point in time because kids actually come in and they go out, you know, throughout the year.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Families move, families move in. So the state picks an actual date, you know, in time that they can then say is the consistent date. That is typically October first. So I can give an enrollment number now, but our October first number might be different than the exact number that I give them.
Is the official.
But it won't be, I mean, it's not gonna be massively far off.
Right.
You know, if I had to estimate a difference, I would say down by, you know, fifty, something like that. Not by, you know, probably around that zone, but up in the lower grade, down overall again. You know, five fifty until you hit that threshold where that trending starts going back up, which should be actually in the next couple of years. And then as I recall, it was in the twenty twenty four year, you, you end up at five fifty eight in that pre K zone, pre K through two zone. And now you're at like four seventy four. So that, to give you an idea, you know, of, of it edging back up, that's about the scale of it.
But as far as, I think it's an important point is that over the summer, we've seen a larger influx of students than normal.
And then I'll... Yeah, I mean, uh, it, it's actually coming true. Like some of the stuff that they've been saying about the lower grades is coming true.
Like twenty students at the high school.
When I was originally looking at it, you'd see one year it was one thirty in kindergarten and then it went up to, I think NAS, NASDAQ, um, had projected one forty four. And I was looking at it going, huh, that's gonna, but it's, I mean, it's like the other day it was one forty three. So it's like, that's actually trending the way they set it, right? You know, so that, that's, that's where that's at for now. Um, but again, once you get to that threshold in twenty twenty four of about five fifty eight or so, it then continues to be in that five fifty zone. And that's why it'll be bigger than the classes you have, you know, right now, but, you know, it's not gonna bring you back to three thousand. It's gonna bring you back to somewhere in between those two. So it's trending back up. I mean, who knows what happens after twenty twenty eight? That's, that's pretty much.
Yeah.
You know.
And then her other one was on the transition academy?
So I did respond to that email today or yesterday, probably late last night, I would think. Um, and I talked about, uh, the, the program itself utilizes a special educator that we have now. The differential is that we are, uh, first of all, the program is excellent for children, for the young adults. It's gonna hook them up very well. It's, it's a, it's a, in my opinion, it's better than, than what they have had. They have local connections. It's, it's a great thing. Um, and it's gonna turn out having a beneficial financial return for the district as well. But that's not the reason to do it. The reason to do it is because it's the right thing for the kids. Um, but overall, we'll be putting, putting in less than what we're getting back from that. Um, but again, the reason to do it is that it's the right thing for kids.
And that's for the eighty to twenty one year olds, kids?
Yes, it's for the kids. That the district serves the students through age twenty one, twenty two. Um, and it's for, for the students in that population.
Yeah, that's... Right, right.
And again, we looked at it, like we look at a lot of things right now and we looked at it and said, you know what? We could actually do this, you know, in an excellent manner. Do it just as good or better than it's done anywhere else and do it in a way that, um, you know, is, um, is avoiding certain costs for the district.
And where, um, where do we, like, do we contract with the agency right now? Do we work with an agency of Jeff or something?
We have previously contracted with agencies.
And then now we're doing it ourselves.
And now we are, you know, we are, because, uh, we built up that capacity and training of the people and all that, we're able to do it ourselves.
Awesome.
And again, I think that's another way that, you know, we keep, you know, students having opportunities close to home. Um, we're able to do it very well. We highly train the people. And there's no reason, this is one of those no brainers. You should be doing this. Um, and it helps us all. They have a number of beneficial...
Keeping those, keeping our kids in our districts is one of our, the first goal listed on our agenda.
And the lines.
Mm-hmm. Support for encouraging specialized programs. I consider those alternatives helpful.
And again, knowing the people working in this program and knowing the program, if my child was in this situation, I would want them in it. So it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's good for, good option.
What's your question? Is it some other Horizons? Do you know what Horizons?
I am very familiar with them, yes.
Because I, I teach some Horizon students at Eastern. And is it a similar, okay, to that?
Yes. Uh, Horizons would be one of the ones that the past.
We would outplace too. Yes.
Students might least and that we have determined we can do as good of a job. No, I'm not cracking on Horizons at all.
No.
Great people. I think we're able to do, um, as good of a job. Not better because they're, they're here with us.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, with the people they know and, you know.
For our town students who benefit from Eastern Connecticut State University courses, we do allow them to come in for free.
Right.
Which is very nice.
Get that benefit anyway.
I think, uh...
Is there another question?
Michelle has a whole bunch of course points, but...
What we call them?
A lot of those I got. No, typically I'll try to get to the examples that one is passing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Try to break down, Michelle. Um, for, I do wanna make a motion for discussion of ECS, um, what happened last night. I'll complete and I'll submit in.
Just need a second.
Second. Move it actually. I'd like to do it. I'd agree on this one.
Can I make a G one?
Alright, so move it to G one.
Cause I, I can give you some information if you want.
Yep. Did you s- second?
I did.
Any, um, discussions on here? Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Alright, up to us. Students report.
Hello. Um, surprisingly, we actually have a lot to talk about considering that school hasn't started yet. Um, I just wanna start off personally by saying, uh, Dr. Willett, simply the fact that he's been talking about things like that and saying, this will monetarily benefit our school, but that's not the reason we're doing it. It's for the kids, things like that. We love you, Dr. Willett. I just, I just wanna remind you.
Very nice, yeah.
Personally, I went to the, uh, peer mentoring, uh, that happened at the high school. We trained over two days. I know, I went to August, the August twenty sixth date. There was another one earlier in the month. Um, and we were training for peer mentoring to lead, uh, a bunch of freshmen, incoming freshmen around the school, teach them where their classes are, what to expect from the high school, et cetera. Um, so we went on individual tours of students this year. Mrs. Fox set that up and...
And we're super excited about that.
Yes, uh, the incoming junior, uh, peer mentors, they said on their applications to be a peer mentor in the Q and A section, uh, that they would really like one-on-one tours because it felt a little unpersonal, uh, having like three or four kids and leading them around all of their schedules at the same time. So we did individual tours and a peer mentor was paired up with one student, uh, while other kids were in the auditorium with our new vice principal at the high school, Mr. Pollan. And he was explaining a lot of our, a lot of our student handbook things, things they should expect. Um, there was also a club fair that myself and Mrs. Fox helped put together. Uh, and they said it, considering the fact that I helped put it together, I'm proud to say they actually liked it this year. So, um, uh, besides that, they, we also played games with them, just like group discussion and just getting to know them, like your, your average like camp games pretty much. Uh, there was a barbecue lunch afterwards with options for pretty much everyone. Uh, let's see, what else? Besides that, I've heard word about, uh, this year's integrated science curriculums at the high school being much more world centric. And I just think that's awesome considering the fact that we are living in an ever-changing world and science is one thing that we, we really need to push and that's happening. So I find that really awesome that Collins ahead of that game. Um, about the hidden and plain sight, I just want to say as a reminder of peer mentors, where if there needs to be any help with a program like that, putting it together for students, peer mentors can help with that. I know student council would be totally willing to help with that. Um, and one other quick comment before I turn this over to Alexandra. Um, there, this is, Dr. Willett can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the lowest or the smallest fresh incoming freshman class we've had in a while, right?
Probably.
Yeah, and, and I know at, at least within like the past ten years or so.
Cause you're starting to see the bubble of the trough there.
However, we also have a lot more incoming town public school students, a lot more than we've had previously, as I think Mrs. Moran mentioned.
Where the...
So it, it balances itself out and we're, we're making do and everything's working out. I know she had something to say about...
Uh, going back to freshman orientation, so I wasn't able to make it. But my brother is an incoming freshman and from my personal experience with, experience with my freshman orientation, I remember feeling confused because it was a few of us being led around by one peer mentor. And on the first day, I was a bit lost, but then my brother approached talking to him about it. He said it was a good experience and he was telling me like all the classes and he knew exactly where they were. So I think one-on-one for, uh, freshman orientation was definitely helpful.
I know I heard positive feedback from my freshmen.
I did too. My daughter said it was good.
It's great, yeah.
Yeah.
Friends.
She's gonna be in a few words. So good job.
Thank you guys.
Do you know how many peer mentors there are, roughly? Oh, I wanna s-, uh, I wanna say sixty? Cause it was, uh, it was roughly five peer mentors to every advisory class of fifteen. Uh, so I wanna say since we're in like the one ninety five range, I think for incoming freshmen, I think it was around sixty. If I remember correctly.
Or if you can...
Sounds like pretty close.
Yeah. How did the new vice principal do on the holiday?
I've, I've heard absolutely nothing but great things about him. So I, I think he was an awesome hire and what I've seen of Mr. Pollen so far is wonderful. And I cannot wait to work with him with student council this year.
Okay. Well, good luck next week.
My dear.
Alright, um, question.
So, um, we add it to the agenda, the agenda G one of the CS, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, looking at the, at the situation, kind of thinking about the conversation that the board that had, um, you know, I think this is on the agenda for you to be able to discuss the ECS with respect to, you know, what we started last night. Um, certainly I can give you an aware, my opinion on the situation given, um, what I've looked into. But I don't want to stir the thunder of anyone who would like to speak first. So, you know, you want me to talk about this or do you wanna talk about it first as, as court members?
Well, maybe, yeah.
And Harry and Gus that were there, Kim, Dylan, it was like Kate and Jeff, they know, I mean, they aren't able to make it. Um, so we asked for a meeting in Twister. I think drop me in Twister. I don't know the reason why. Got to have one. Um, so that was a big dis talking. Talked to Dave. I mean, what they're gonna do with the money would have been nice to dis talk. So, um, and then they decided to use the money.
I got lost after a while because there were so many different...
Well, I mean, just to back up for a second, there was really not much acknowledgement of our communication other than Mr. Werner doing an explanation of their lawyer's perspective.
That wasn't so lawyer.
There were the lawyers.
Somebody in their department said it.
Oh, somebody in their lawyer.
Sure.
They didn't have an education, but did their lawyer contacted the state.
Yeah.
I thought that he said he had.
Or just a contact.
And, uh, talked to somebody at the state. That's what I heard. So.
Kevin Chambers, he's the ECS guy.
Anyway.
Couldn't have said that.
So.
Yes.
Yeah. So anyways, so ends up it's gonna be used for different simplification purposes and there's gonna be multiple people here and so on. So, I don't know. Dead horse, but we can at least talk about them last time, I guess. Um, I don't know if you found out anything for today?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, you know, I think these kinds of situations can be tricky. I think, you know, I've expressed that before. Um, yeah, my sense of it is this, that, um, that the lawyer feels that there is a legal grounds to suggest that, um, that the law, um, you know, is clear about educational posture and the sequence of events, um, would give the board an illegal, um, possibility. Having said that, um, whether the State Department of Education or not, you know, we take that up or not is a different, different story and type. So, um, my impression is that, you know, that we're not the first, you know, district to have questions about this. And I think that, um, that, um, Mr. Werner's, uh, statements about his conversation with Mr. Chambers are accurate. So this is one of those situations where, um, you can have two people talking about a similar thing and both can be accurate from the perspective that they are coming from. The lawyer is playing the accuracy with respect strictly to the law. Um, the, um, Mr. Werner's comments are accurate with respect to, um, the State Department of Ed. And that, um, if that's where we're at, they're both accurate. So, um, I'm not sure that helps you at all as a board that that, that is true. They're both accurate in what they said. I can go further than that and, you know, you can ask me, I think, my opinion would be, but that's, that's the facts of the situation. The lawyer is accurate with respect to the law and Mr. Werner is, is accurate with respect to, you know, State Department of Education.
Well, as our resident expert on all things education or attempt, what do you think?
So I think that, um, that at this point, um, it's important to offer the information that you have to your colleagues on the council so that everyone understands where, um, you know, where the perspectives are coming from. And that, um, given the situation and, and the desire to move forward as a collective group and a team, that, uh, I wouldn't make any further requests for ECS. Like, I would work collaboratively and, and make your points and communicate what you feel, um, should be the case. Uh, and then move forward collaboratively in this situation. Because while you have, you have options, I don't see any of those options playing out in a way that, you know, would result in, um, an outcome that you would find desirable or that the council would find desirable in the end. Like it would end up being something undesirable for everybody ultimately. I'm not taking away from any of the opinions people have about this. I'm just looking at the whole thing from the standpoint of these perspectives leave a lot of prey to fight over and I don't see any benefit in fighting. Now, I was just gonna say the option Dr. Willett's suggesting isn't really an option, the option of working collaboratively because, I mean, I like you guys a lot, but this is the third night in a row we've been together and I'm not sure why. You know, the, you know, we, we sent the request to the council that said, before you decide anything with regard to the allocation of the education funding, please sit down with the Board of Education to discuss the following. And we purposely didn't spell it out because it was two hours of discussion. And we didn't wanna just put hot buttons, you know, in a note. We wanted to actually have a discussion. So I don't know what you have in mind with it collaboratively. Maybe we ask the council just stop and now we have a new town manager. Let's engage this new town manager because, you know, three nights in a row in volunteer work to go nowhere isn't productive. I have a lot better things and I think all of you guys have a lot better things to do with your time. So I don't know what you need to collaborate with me. Well, I would say the bare minimum, I think that that the position that that, you know, everyone has put in with respect to this may feel undesirable, you know, to everyone, um, the issue is that, um, you know, taking any action on it would also have undesirable consequences across, you know. So if there is contention now, it would exacerbate the contention. I'm not saying that it will magically create cohesion, I'm saying that a situation that's already, um, you know, in need of improvement would simply just got even more convoluted. So I'm not, I'm not, um, you know, again, I offer this humbly to you, it's simply that, you know, I don't think that, um, that, uh, a legal option, for instance, would would be your prerogative, I don't think that 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 would, um, that will end with anything other than an increased level of of difficulty and animosity, and I think it would be difficult for both parts.
Awesome, I'm sorry. You know, so I would agree that when a Board of Education and Town Council aren't aligned, aren't working well together, nobody wins.
Yep.
No doubt in my mind, nobody wins.
Yep.
The su- situation we're in is that we have Town Council, Board of Education that aren't working together and aren't able to collaborate, so. It's a, it's not, it's still not ready, we can say, yeah, we wanna collaborate.
So let's let's separate that as a different issue and approach that from the standpoint of clearly articulating what what is felt to be, um, the things that may be sparking that, is that what you should. But but that that should be separated and put maybe in a different place so that that can be worked on. This particular issue, you know, I think, um, I think that it could be a more divisive and, and, um, I don't know, a a more unproductive situation for both both elected parties. And I'm not trying to take away from any, uh, feelings that people have about this, I'm not telling anyone that their feelings are wrong, I'm strictly looking at it pragmatically. And I'm not saying anyone's not looking at it, I'm just saying from from my perspective, I humbly offer that I think that given the situation that we're in, that that both comments and both statements are true and valid, but that pushing it would just create a situation that would be ultimately undesirable in the long run. And that at this time, this should be left where it is, um, you know, with, again, giving a professional and courteous, um, statement or 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 whatever, that we are all brothers and sisters in this situation and to be aware that this perspective is out there. And that it could at some point, you know, be something that someone paid attention to and created a problem for Tolan with, so we have to be mindful of it. But offer it as as an opportunity to to look at, you know, these perspectives and be knowledgeable about them as we move forward.
Who do you wanna channel about?
Yeah, coming in for Monday night, he'd be really, really upset. And I don't blame him, my biggest thing, it's not not always about the mother. It's about partnership and working together, that's what I'm most mad, I'm not mad about, you know, the the E C S to go to our schools, you know. Our role here is to support our district's students, if we can't work together, that's not a community, that's a one, like I would say. Some people making decisions for everybody else, not including us, yours and ours.
That's, we vote this way.
But, so that's how I feel, I'm disappointed, after all these years of service, this is what it is now. But I agree, like, you work with going forward, you can't bring lawyers into it, cause it doesn't help the town, you wanna help our residents.
Can I say how we overcome this lack of acknowledgement of each other and like they didn't even acknowledge that we sent them anything, that we have valid concerns about the legalness of this, what they're, what they wanna do and they're just disregarding us and it's disrespectful. I, well, I feel if you don't do something, you know, we're completely powerless to make decisions for our schools, you know, that.
We just, we sent them not just information about E C S, but I think just a concern about state of schools and the direction that we will be heading over the next few years. And this issue is bigger than just this one decision, you know, I think you can't have a narrative that says, oh, schools are fine, and if you just look back at the past year and spending the past year, it shows that everything's fine. And we won't pay attention to what the board says. Because I think if you look over the past year, you forget that two years ago, the schools went ahead with a plan to reduce about three and a half million dollars. And anything happened over the past year, just an attempt to recover from that, and that's the real narrative. And that's not being even contemplated, not even being considered. And so I I wouldn't even mind if they make these decisions as long as they say, yes, what you're saying, or those good things you have, those those are legitimate. We share those concerns in in ownership of the school district and we're gonna decide to do this anyway. I don't, I'd almost be okay with that, but that's not what's being said, what's being said is we can do this and there's really no impact and we can do our fin- our own financial analysis that shows, oh, everything's fine.
You know, it's funny, I have heard, well, I have heard some some of the, this is hard, you know, it's hard and there is things that are being lost, but, you know, we have to do this. And I've also heard hyperbole and and things that I feel personally are damaging, um, so I've heard both. I would love to see a situation where we can, we can do what you're saying and be able to say, you know, um, speak truths that can exist together, right? Like, we do have reduced E C S coming, we do have to make some kind of plan for that, we have, and if that keeps happening, you're gonna lose good people. Um, F O Y A is weaponized, you're gonna lose good people, you know, these kinds of things have to stop. Um, but having said that, I've heard part, I've heard people like that overtly and in in the best interest of the taxpayers and Tolan and the things that happened in the year seventeen eighteen and all of that. So, but it but again, if those things are weaponized and characterized as somehow inappropriate, that just drags us into a hole where people are gonna start wanting to do that to each other and we are getting farther down that hole. Um, like I said, as you know, I've discouraged like the way of the townspeople, cause I know that would hurt their staff. And I know we're all getting absolutely overwhelmed right now. So I think that the, there's a lot of possibilities for hope and good ways forward and we can't give up on trying to do that. And finding ways to get that done forward. This E C S thing is not the way to get that. This thing will turn into a maelstrom that no one will ultimately come out of okay. And it it also could be turned into, you know, you have you have a whole bunch of months coming up to have some uncertainty and then with respect to even the respective board. I'm not sure this would be the kind of narrative we wanna go into that, into that situation with, um. I don't know how that would benefit anyone either, so as much as this situation may feel that it that it burns for for people, um, I think that we're gonna have to put this aside and and look for ways to move forward without making this you know, the miller that you dine on, so to speak.
Excellent.
Sure.
Um, I'm probably the only one up here that thinks that the tax stabilization fund is a good idea. Um, from what I heard last night from Bill, it sets the next town council up for success with not having to reduce our budget. I see it as the only way for us, you know, those of us that are at the table again next year if we're elected, um, to go and ask for these positions that we lost, because I do believe that we need these intervention positions. Um, but I also agree that right now we can't use this extra money for operating costs, so that's why I think this tax stabilization fund is a great idea and I think I know, usually I would advocate on the, um, not spending so much money on things, um, but if we were to advocate for anything, you know, to take some money aside and maybe do some of the capital laboratory upgrades, um, and then still put some money in that that tax fund, um, to offset the mill rate. Because we're gonna have needs, we're gonna have a lot of needs, you you know, Sammy pointed out all the holes, you know, some of which that, you know, I didn't know existed or you know, this is a learning process, but I don't see the fund as being this bad thing, I s- I see it as a way of the council to help us in future years, so. That's what I said.
Okay, I just wanna say this real quick for that.
Not to be dead worse.
The town council has the means of using a reserve fund as a tax stabilization fund? And they do include two hundred thousand dollars in the budget. And this year they used an additional hundred thousand dollars and they locked it, so I have a really hard time believing that they're going to actually use this money to help, to to not budget as conservatively as we have been and have put us in this position. So I think having one more fund that ties up money, there's no guarantee that it will be used and they could just not help us fill our holes, because I don't hope that they believe us when we say we have these holes, that's my issue with that, another fund.
The, um, we already have a tax stabilization fund, we've already put away over a million dollars more than the council projected two years ago. In the miller that you have, not the one from last May, but the May before that. It said that the, um, reserves right now, the last published number would be seven point four million dollars. Well, it's almost eight point four million dollars, it's a million dollars, almost a million dollars higher than what was published. And that surprisingly wasn't talked about last night, I mean, you can't talk about having a tax stabilization fund when you don't talk about the increase in reserve that you're sitting on that you already have, I mean, let's let's have a a fair discussion about that.
That was one of our asks in our communication for them to just.
And if they just go up a million dollars, from what they said it would go up two years ago to where it is now, um, since the holdback started, the council has talked about the this unassigned reserve fund going down. It was at six point eight million dollars when the holdback started and they were talking about it going down to six million, down into the five millions. And that's why they put an order simply, so they're very concerned about that. Well, we should be celebrating the fact that we're not at five million dollars, we're at eight point three million dollars, we're almost eight point four, yeah, eight point three million dollars. So you have a tax stabilization fund, it's half, it's half of, if you pick that delta between what they were worried it was going to be and what it is now, it's over half of the whole E C S reduction over ten years. That's this tax stabilization fund they have it. And I'm not even saying it's bad to do, I'm just saying, let's have a conversation that looks at all the information, not just cherry pick the information that makes it sound like this is a good decision. Because if I was just listening to the conversation last night, yeah, we should be saving for, you know, issues in the future, we should have a reserve, well, good, we have a reserve.
To the detriment of this town public schools.
When the schools were told to reduce by three point four million dollars and operated from June of, I'm sorry, July of two thousand seventeen up until February two thousand seventeen with that assumption, you know, not being able to spend that money, that did end up in this fund. And then to Chris's point, it's at eight point three million dollars now, some of that over the past year has, I think, gone to the board or we they would entertain us asking for capital, capital, um, non-recurring expenses from that number, I don't know what the most.
I don't know if we submitted those, to be honest with you, all I remember is I was up here pitching a fit about all this money going towards parking lots.
Still are.
I think. Uh, because that's it, you know, I know many parking lots for safety, I I get it, but I'm just saying that million dollars in the fund balance was already, it's already dedicated to the Board of Ed.
It's not.
So you can't.
It it's called the unassigned reserve, the criteria is that it's not dedicated, I mean, the council could appropriate it, but it wouldn't, if it was dedicated to the Board of Ed, it wouldn't be unassigned reserve. By definition, it's unis- by definition, it's the money that when we go to the banks to say, we have a, we have this this money that's not assigned to any purpose, that's what they look at. So we can't have it both ways, we can't go to the bank and say, it's assigned, it's not assigned for any purpose, but we're gonna use it for parking lots, it's not.
So we haven't asked to for funding for the parking lots?
So the last number published was June thirtieth, I I don't know the answer to that, but the last number published was June thirty.
I just feel like this is data.
I know, we've been here this.
I think what you're saying is that, um, you're you're s- you're feeling that the unassigned and unassigned balance have gone up and that, um, you know, that the minimum threshold there is being set at hundred percent and things like that are protective mechanisms financially, that maybe you're feeling more overprotective at the expense of the schools. And I think that, you know, that that's from, you know, a a, um, a place of 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 feeling like there needs to be certain financial protections. And I think that to some extent, those financial protections make sense. I think that on on the other side of that fence, I think that the Board of Ed over the last six years has had an average of one point six three percent increase. That's extremely responsible. We plan, you know, we have to make plans eighteen months in advance of the time that those budget end, so if we have money that we, you know, can use, that's well within the board's purview under ten to twenty-two to use money for things at the end of the year that would help benefit the education system and the students, even if it's not what was exactly the mindset. And it's the limit, the burden is to not overspend what you were granted, not not to spend it in different places. People have to stop making that out to be an evil, it's not. It's my responsibility to plan in that way and make it work for you, stop making it out like it's an evil. At the same time, Town Council has supported the district beyond the M B R, they did not go to the minimum budget requirement, you know, thing that they could do, there's a five-year lift back and gave a point eight four percent. So they they did support it in that way, right? So it's it's not, it's not, it's all in the hyperbolic stuff that's causing the damage, the the throwing out the seventeen positions, and we all know what seventeen eighteen had in it. If you read my articulation of that year, the board and I did the responsible thing, that year of watching out for the holdbacks and not going crazy, hiring in the middle of that disaster. So to portray that as irresponsible or somehow misguided or stupid or, you know, whatever, that's that's wrong, that's wrong. It makes everybody think it's horrible and they'll go out and post stuff and then everybody becomes enemies of everybody else, it's it's your biggest problem right now. So, you know, these kinds of things, the one point to me, all of that has to stop. Um, F O Y A, I mean, something that we have given the Town Council and other places that gives the majority of the information, you're just putting a burden on me at a time where I'm already super burdened. I I have to report all kinds, so stop. You know, I think that there are things where people are supporting each other and those are the things we have to encourage and continue. Um, we have to be careful of this black hole being sucked into, um, where this hyperbole reigns, because it's it's getting posted out there, people run with it and then they start stop, they they start questioning whether they should support us or not, and I think that, and I mean, when I say us, I'm talking about your whole community here, it's it's a plague on your community. We do have one less A P at the high school, that's been a headache for a long time and that's created a lot of consternation and probably a loss of staff because of it, we don't have a curriculum director, that is hard. It's not my fault we don't have one, I have made decisions in the best interest of the children and not in my own best interest, that doesn't mean that you still don't need one. And, you know, these things that, you know, that are stated, they they just create more trouble overall. So to bring it back, you know, I think we've gotta find a way to to bring, you know, to to stop the the offensive rhetoric. Uh, and I don't mean offensive like, oh, my feelings are hurt, I mean, it's, you know, it's it's taking an offensive on something and suggesting that some wrongdoing has happened and some massive micromanagement is necessary to rectify this wrongdoing sucks you deeply into the black hole, creates more hyperbole, increase destructive process for everyone. But recognizing that, you know, you've done a responsible thing and, you know, we've got the educational reserve fund set up, so if the maintenance of effort, for instance, for special ed causes a problem for us, we can now use it for special ed funds, that's a good thing. Um, you know, recognizing that the M B R bottom line wasn't gone to, that's a good thing, you know. Um, I think that there are good things here and that, you know, it's important that that we look at how to move forward together, even though there have been some serious transgressions that have hurt. Um, I think that there are ways to move forward with this. And I think that we have to find, we can't stop trying to find them. Um, to bring it back to the E C S piece, this would not be a way of of moving that forward, as much as there may be a feeling that this was done in a way that was, um, not fair. As much as there may be a feeling that this was done in a way that was um, not fair, this kind of, this di- this particular situation would not be a way of moving that that needle forward, it would just create a more um, more divisive situation. But I tell you, as one of your employees, man, you know, you got, this this whole thing has to stop. And and it just is, it's not gonna, and this is not, it it, I'm just the one saying that. There's other people on the town side that would tell you that too, but they may not wanna stand up and do it. It just, it just hasn't stopped.
Well, we appreciate you, we appreciate all.
Yes. You know, infinite wisdom, I think, is helpful.
All the staff and all the kids.
That's probably over kiss it.
Yeah. It is.
But um.
It's helpful. It's.
I think it's good, honestly, to be upset. It's good to be.
Well, it's true.
No.
It's also our job without being paid to advocate, so that's our job.
And I think, yeah, right. And if you, I think from my perspective, it just seems like folks that work for the town, whether on the Board of Ed side or the town side, but it's all the same side, it's the same town. Um, they're tired. And and as, you know, as the representatives of our town, what are we doing to kinda remove barriers so that they can do what they're hired to do? Or are we just putting up more barriers? And if we're putting up more barriers, then to what end? It it's sad that we just can't kinda work together, not kinda work together, but actually work together, it's sad.
I would say keep trying, there's gonna be breakthroughs in ways. Just, you know, I I would suggest looking for the things that you can say, okay, I don't agree with you about that, but I can see that you attempted to move it in a direction, you know, and try to find the common ground. And then, you know, and um, and focus on that. And then, you know, maybe just wherever we can, we have to be careful of not falling into the the, you know, that hyperbole thing.
Yeah.
So the next thing that happens with the ECS decision is public participation?
Public hearings.
And during those public hearings, we've already said our piece, so the board just sit back.
Well, public hearings are for people to say their piece, and I think probably people should say their piece. I think it's just during the process of saying their piece, you know, um, just uh, to the extent that everyone has their say, it may not be their way and 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 the best that one can do is 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 say what you believe your truth to be. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think one can do that without implying wrongdoing, and I'm not making a judgment call about the wrongdoing or not, as much as I'm just saying, I think it's possible to make a statement about what you believe to be the best course of action with respect to this without getting into wrongdoing. Because I think that just gets into a spiraling, you know. It also sets it up where, you know, somebody might wanna make a response. You know, it just turns into a thing that turns into a back and forth. And if the, if enough people have a certain feeling about it a certain way, I would imagine that the town council is an electric body and they're gonna listen to people and if enough people come up and say something, they may change how they approach the situation, just like you would. But I think that, I would say, let's, let's have people line up and say their truth about it and then not imply wrongdoing. So for instance, you know, let's say someone really feels like it should be transferred to the board for a, for a curriculum director. Say it, just go up and say that, and if seventy-five people come up and say that, maybe it's something that they'll consider. On the other hand, if enough seventy-five come up and say it's actually fun, then, you know, again, they'll balance that. But the bottom line is say the truth without a, let's all try to say our truths, you know.
The courteous way.
Yep, and without a um, without this, without a wrong, wrongdoing piece. Without, you know, I think that that's, that will help us in all, in all directions, in every sense, with all people involved.
Any other discussion?
I would second that, we can make our point, both boards, board and the town council can make their point without personal attacks or either directly or implying that the other side is being less than truthful or less than honest or less than on the board.
Or incompetent.
Or on the level, or competent, yes.
You know, no, no patronizing.
That's what tires me out the most with this.
No, just to try, but you're all foolish, you know, and and we know the best way. I think it's just, here's my truth, here's what I think is gonna make this town work better or not.
And what what tares me out is the constant implied either incompetency or or attacks on the person and not on the board itself.
Any other idea, would you frankly tell me how to talk this thing?
I think he's interested in coming, I think he's gonna wanna come for one of these, stay hard.
Mm-hmm. Sounds very nice, and just like you did.
Man, I thought it was tough.
Yeah, it's tough.
I think you can obviously have your attention, it was not helpful, it's uh, it's pretty obvious. Um, any other other questions? You could move it on and say your piece with the public parents. Do we know when they're up yet? Is that their, their intended, next meeting? Their next meeting? September tenth? See y'all there.
I will be at the partner presentation.
Uh, that same night?
Mm-hmm.
Over that. All right, so we're moving on to committee on liaison reports.
Finance and facilities was close call on us on the twenty-third.
Policy is on that, um, but the negotiations we reached to ten, they're going to be in the meeting, so we'll have that ready soon. We're doing some. And um, teachers are on the way. And for the building committee, I will remember to talk about it. We are working on approving the building design concept for the new project. And it's pretty exciting. It's pretty exciting to see like what it's going to be, every building. A real building, that's gonna support twenty-five lessons.
Yes.
Wow.
That's my big thing.
Wow.
Better. Again, I'm gonna have to, you know, have to plug in, you use forty minutes of instructional time every day times a hundred and eighty-one days because you can't get enough buses. You get enough buses in there, you gain back forty times a hundred and eighty-one days. That's a big deal.
That's a lot of time.
A lot of time, that's a big difference. So that's why I'm driving the H H C J people crazy, but I keep saying, can you fit twenty-five up? Can you fit all the buses in there?
And we're reading, um, there had been approval from us last week that we had kind of time to really digest it, we got the plans to go through the meeting, so um, we're especially wanting to make that. And then, um, hopefully we'll move on, otherwise we need to project time, which will be a little. Okay, um, Bridge Grove, the portals are amazing. For what they are, it's really, um, I just thought Karen and I both went to the library, helped each other pack it, and it's, it's gonna be a great experience. I mean, the whole, all the staff that I saw were all really positive and excited and, you know, it's a challenge for them, but they're making the best of it, so. I think those kids will have a great time this year. And I thank the staff for doing what they're doing to make this happen, that's awesome.
It's a massive undertaking, like.
You know, just throw out some stuffy.
No, go ahead, it's a, I'm 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 so proud of how the community has just really come together, like the the teachers, the kids, the parents, all the other members. It's really like, okay, we are a community and let's go, let's take care of ourselves, it's very cool.
Uh, you know, I think, uh, think about it, an entire school was built in eight weeks.
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta give it to Tomato, you know, I mean, that's, that's like, that's an amazing feat. This is actually an entire school building and that was eight weeks ago.
And only three days, like.
And again, right, who knows, to Peter Staba, to Tony Tomato, and the rest of the structural people, which the town staff, everybody, I think we stopped all the names. But the bottom line is, it's it's an amazing feat, so. It's our, it's our own little miracle, our little wonder of the world. You should just look at it like, you know, it's not the Hanging Guardians, it's not, it's not really the pyramids, but really.
Okay, it is, it's interesting, the people.
Eight weeks ago, it wasn't there, so.
They don't know what's happening.
That would exist.
But they don't know about it.
Yeah.
It's not the same at that Bridge Grove, it's like, oh yeah, it's all brutal. Because people don't understand, like the entire building is coming down. Yeah, and that all our students are in these modulars, you know, our entire school population is in modulars.
Yeah.
It's very futuristic.
I I have to, I have to say, I was being there yesterday, the attention to some detail was very impressive, just the paving and curving and there's grass planted already and it's just, it's crazy, it is, yeah, so like it's.
It's amazing achievement. And you, you know, cruise to your whole community, um, all the people, you know, town staff, everybody that are getting it done. And your reimbursement rate again, unbelievable. Just look at that building, you got a hundred percent reimbursement on it, I mean, you understand, I mean, that's unbelievable.
We didn't even have to collect any camps.
Thanks to the state.
We'll take them for Project Grad.
I know.
And again, you're getting eighty-nine percent on the building itself, that's, again, you know. So, so really awesome things happening in town, why people wanna come here.
I, I just wanna echo too what Michelle said about the staff because they really, first and foremost, are very um, positive about the kids. And everyone I've talked to is like, no, but we're, the room's gonna be great, you know, the kids are gonna have a great experience, um, so. Who knows to our staff, I don't know, just.
Yeah, unbelievable, who knows? The teachers are doing an amazing job getting it all together. You know, it was funny because I watched the big reveal, you know, as I walked in, you know, and 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 the first thing was the eyes went wide open and then they just jumped in to make it all work, you know. It's the true, true heroes, true birds, and right into it, so.
Yeah, let's just put that in perspective for a second, like yesterday was the first time that the teachers saw their room. They, right, they haven't really, they have not seen what their space was gonna be, so.
Having put together seventeen rooms.
And their mags are in my, in their cars and they're waiting to get in and it's lost, Jeff. This is, yesterday was it, so they, that was it, that was their first viewing, literally. And they got to be ready next week, so that's a breeze.
But I would like to go on to more.
Yes, yeah, I mean, you know, again, it's, it's, right now, they're just getting it all in place, so we'll definitely do tours. You know, the first day too is the stagger opening for all parents to be able to get in and see it.
They love parking.
So.
Yeah, we want first day.
Parking, you know, like any high demand, awesome thing, you wanna get there early, it could park.
Or take the opportunity to get a couple extra stops in.
Yeah, or or carpooling, carpooling is really good.
Or carpool, parking there, kind of, yeah.
I mean, as soon as my T I S kid gets on the bus, I'm driving my Bridge Grove kid to Bridge Grove. So I get a parking spot and get in as soon as possible, get out of there, so I can open a spot.
I mean, I will actually make a plug, a plug in, you know, in all seriousness. Parents who uh, who who feel confident, obviously not first day, I understand that, but um, I would, I would encourage your kids to get used to the buses because the more kids that come on the buses, the less congestion for parents. You'll actually be improving your own lives greatly. Because you won't be, you know, stuck there worrying about getting to Hartford while you're trying to drop off because the, this is a tighter lot, it's gonna work, but it's a tighter lot and so the more kids that ride the bus, the better off for everyone ultimately.
See, I have a question about the buses, I don't know if that was the right kind of ask or ask real time, um, about the possibility of students who have siblings at T I S who may have to do pickups, if they can take a bus to T I S?
We explored that and it did not look like it was gonna work.
It would work great for me.
Uh, but the pickup situation being in a different location, I did contact the bus company, came up with, I responded to someone about that, I'm not sure, but if we investigate in an accurate form, it would, would um, yeah. But um, I'll look up my answer, because I don't think you were the one who asked, but I'll send you what I sent back. If I, if I understand your question correctly.
It would just alleviate the parents' pickup, if they don't want to be there, they want to be there because.
You're talking about shoveling from like a.
From Bridge Grove T I S to get picked up with the siblings at T I S?
Right, and that, that had some logistical challenges that would make it difficult.
How to step back.
So, but I did explore it. And I did, and I, you know, and I'm exploring shelves, but I don't know how much, you know, this is per staff. Um, I don't know whether that might actually be actualizable or not, because it's a signif- it's a cost significantly.
Any other reports, the, the conclusions that you had this week? Um, I'm just, I'm excited for me, but I'll ask the points of information I'd like to ask around to the first one, so. Um, there's no board action, correct? All right, two minute, I'll look this patient.
Deb, yeah, one seven six, Caitlin, uh, just two clarifications. Thank you for clarifying about the attendance, so it's going down this year still, but then it will be increasing after that, so that's good to know. The uh, staff difference this year versus last year. What is your comparison? I came up with a negative point five.
You mean overall?
Yeah.
Per staff, FTE, both grant and non-grant?
Just the, the grant, what, no, um, the non-grant.
No, you mean operational budget?
The non-grant.
Probably, if I had to run off the top of my head, maybe um, you know, overall from twenty sixteen, maybe down by three, I would have to look.
From last year to this?
From last year, FTE, exactly, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I would have to look. For FTE, exactly where we're at.
Yeah.
For instance, we have point seven three of an A V I S we haven't hired yet. We have, you know, um, we have some positions that are coming, so I, it it's not where it's finally.
But you lost two teaching positions.
We lost, yeah, we lost, what we lost with the intervention positions, two intervention positions.
And then you gained a business office position and a point five or minus.
There's an assistant accountant, but we did that as part of a transition plan, that would have otherwise created some significant issues for the district.
Oh, I understand the reasoning.
So there was a, there was a reduction.
I know, it would be rude, but maybe that would have been just given less and then you could respond.
So there, okay, there was a reduction in what we, we need one person, so that we could balance the situation.
Okay. Um, and then the ten si- ten dash two six two I that you keep referencing as to your legal reason, do you know which subsection of that?
So the lawyer referenced it, I did send the entire um, piece to to the representatives, uh, my colleagues on the town side. Um, so I, as I've said in uh, in the meeting where that came up, I I just leave it to the lawyer's interpretation of it. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't really go into it any further than that.
Okay, because everyone's talking about legal action, I'm just wondering which section you're basing that on, because.
Again, I, I mean, I, like I said before, I'm not a lawyer, I just got the legal opinion. He was clear in his legal opinion about it. Beyond that, I can't speculate.
Okay, thank you.
Did you wanna finish your answer, or do we?
Thank you.
And although Deb, did you get them all, I think she was, okay, just wanna make sure we did it.
Yes. Yeah. No, he answered it, thank you.
Okay. And to make it clear, we're not making any legal action with the council. We don't want that to be all over social media tonight, oh, we're gonna sue the town, we're not. It's just something we laugh, but it probably gonna be on there.
We asked some legal clarification.
Right. So it's.
But it's worth, the board's for legal clarification?
The board asked for a lot to get a legal opinion about.
CCS.
CCS and like how the fund should be allocated according to the law. So he contacted the lawyer in, from Shippen and Duglin?
Yeah.
And that was, will be discussed the other night.
I mean, and as an aside, I, I'm guessing that in general terms, you wanna know as much as you can about it.
Right.
No one can anticipate what these individuals will say when you ask them. This happens to be with this individual. This happens to be with this individual. Um, and beyond that, you know, we all wanna learn as much about it as we can, so.
You shouldn't understand that we're doing a teaching post.
As was most, as with most things, um, it's, it increased its complexity to have that information.
Sorry.
You know?
I was just wondering, was that a meeting I missed that we decided to seek legal counsel?
Well, I don't think you were seeking legal counsel as much as seeking an information from, you know, the expert that you had.
No, but was that decided publicly or was that?
Leadership asked.
Leadership asked.
The, um, in, as to what section, in section C, the first sentence reads, all, and it's, it's, um, the, the name of the thing is, um, expenditures for educational purposes only. You know, there's, there's more in it, but then in section C, the first sentence says, all aid distributed to a town pursuant to the provisions of this section shall be expended for educational purposes only and should be expended upon the authorization of local or regional boards of education. So I think that sentence was, was a big driver in, in things we got, both in terms of the purpose of the aid and the authorization of all of that. And I just, one more question. When people ask questions about enrollment changes and staffing changes, or actually staffing changes, um, I think it's really important to look back. Dr. Willett appropriately said, well, from two thousand sixteen till now. And that's really the way we have to answer those questions, because you can't ju, most of what happened over the past year was trying to fill the holes that we created a year before. And so then to just look at that one year and say, look at all these people that were hired, that's not fair. You really have to look back to two thousand sixteen. And I think if we can just keep reminding people that, I think it will make the information that is being put out there far more clearer. You know, it's really that two-year period you have to look at together.
Because two thousand sixteen was really the year before the craziness started.
Right. Craziness started the middle of July, two thousand seventeen.
Before that, it was like the incremental, like, the increases were like between two point O and three with a couple of years and then it went to zero because of the instability of the state.
I mean, you're, you're stabilizing, as I said in the meeting that we had before, you're stabilizing, you're putting your fingers in a hole of the dam. The issue, you're not gaining the things you had ten years ago. That's, that's the thing that people feel is a sting. Like, you don't have the same, you have a language piece and the skills for us and team leadership, the, the, the support for those, um, those kinds of programs. That is something I am trying to bring back. Um, and, you know, that, that class that I'll be teaching is one step in bringing that back. And the grant that I'm, you know, trying to finalize for that would be one step in bringing that back, but slowly, we wanna keep shifting that direction. And with the cooperation of the town council and others, I think we can, we can do that. Um, but, um, that's the goal, is to, to bring you back to that parity. I don't think you need more than that parity. I definitely believe you do not need less than that parity. I think that's damaging to you, so that's what we gotta try to get back to. And you have an uphill battle with that, because there are way more requirements on you that cost money than there were before. Um, you know, with the, um, mandates and the special education, you know, looking back ten years, you're spending money on things that you didn't have to put money on in the past. And so that's why we're putting our holes in the, you know, fingers in the holes here, maintaining the excellence that you have, but we have to keep working to do that. And that's not gonna mean, it's not gonna be going to the minimum possibility for you. That would be very damaging, very damaging to that effort, um.
Are we, are we in going to some information?
Well, no, still in public participation.
Oh.
I thought they were done, sorry.
I think.
Sorry, was anybody else? No? I have a point to make. I have a question. Is there a question or a recommendation?
Is your point, making a point, did you question?
No, actually, just a good question. I have a chair in access. No, I just wanna know how a complication by some highlights, um.
I think it was absolutely a minute. But I think, uh, Karen, you were quite nice there, right?
Yeah, I was there. I was there. It was wonderful. Um, so this is my sixth, sixth year as a board of education member. I think I missed one complication maybe. This is the most I've cried. Um, the speeches were very inspirational, um, very, um, came from a place of support and love for our Bridge Grove staff and what's going on right now. Um, and just the, the speaker they brought in was great, um. Just the staff was, they were really great and energetic and in good spirits and ready to school year, so, um, it was good. I'll let you, did you wanna talk about the, your, the year of teaching? The what? Oh. No, I wasn't trying to talk about the year. Um.
Well, if I, 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 I wouldn't, I'd say the words, but I wanna pull up the words so that I say the right thing.
Do you, do you? Do you usually wait to announce stuff? I don't know why you do that.
Usually, uh, no.
I won't steal your, I don't want you to kill your fucker, so.
Well, what I, what you can do is, um, we're in a process with, um, them and, um, what I'd like to do is present them to the board at a circular.
Which that, so, which that until people know who you're talking about.
Uh, with the parent and teacher of the year, but I wanna do a kind of reveal for the board of this thing, of the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't have to do that now, because you probably have other things, you know, but we will do that in one of the meetings, if that's okay.
I have a point of information.
Okay.
Um, just in regards to on the agenda and executive session for the purpose of discussion concerning a privileged attorney-client communication regarding the authority of a board of education and a town council member. I just feel that it just sounds divisive and threatening in an executive session. I guess I'll find out why it needs to be done in an executive session, but I just wanted that on the public record.
Is specific wording required for calling executive sessions? So, I, I, I don't know, but you can't just say executive session, I talked about stuff. It has to be executive session and then you have to get the reason. So that's why there's a lot of mention there, but that's required. I didn't have anything to do with putting it together, but.
It just seems targeted.
It's required.
I guess, uh, we just, uh, strongly advocate against any legal action taken by the board on this ECS thing. Just want that well known.
I have a quick points of information. Um, I don't know if anybody else received them from CAPE. Um, it's two thousand nineteen education law summaries. Maybe that's good, no, ma'am? Um, so, um, two thousand nineteen education law summaries. So I just wanted to point out a couple, because these are all laws in effect around education, um, some are necessary, some are to protect children, some are to provide proper curriculum. Um, but all of them come with a price. Whether that's dollars or opportunity costs of time, whatever you have it, um, there are thirty-eight in this book. Um, E A nineteen dash twelve, an act concerning the inclusion of Black and Latino studies in the public school curriculum. So when we talk about things like being a curriculum director, whatnot, um, you know, there's other things in here that are around curriculum issues, um. These are all things that come to our district from the state. So I think it's important to give a little perspective to what's asked of us, um.
After our budget has been set.
After our budget has been set. Um, this one in particular, boards may offer the course beginning with the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, boards must offer the course beginning with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, so, you know, I'm sure there's costs involved and carry ahead of time for that. Um, whether it's textbooks or pre-service, whatever, have you, or curriculum things. An act concerning transitional services for children with autism and spectrum, autism spectrum disorder. An act concerning the inclusion of instruction in culturally responsive pedagogy and practice in the pre-service training, professional development, and in-service training provided to teachers. That's a law now. Um. An act concerning computer science instruction in public schools. Oh, we don't have computer classes, like, that part twelve is not only, no. An act concerning school climates. So I could go on, there's thirty-eight in here. But that's my little point of information for tonight.
Any other points of affirmation?
So the teacher says it's been a little straw.
And teacher, yes.
Yes, I'm glad.
Would that be next meeting or are you?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to.
You wanted to try and do that next meeting?
Yeah. And the thing is, you, you know, it's not on the agenda right now.
Right, right.
We have, we're pushing nine o'clock, it was here to be more. I'm thinking.
I might go in this hour.
Thinking.
Sorry.
Which I deeply appreciate your diligence to everything, I, you know, it's a good thing.
All right. All right, so now we just need a motion for.
Motion for the purpose of a discussion concerning a privileged attorney-client communication regarding the authority of a board of education and town council members for executive session. Inviting in Dr. Willett.